Good evening, everyone. Call to order and a salute to the flag, Ms. LaBelle Pierce. If you would lead us in a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
of the United States
America. And to the republic for which it stands.
Stands.
One nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
All right. School Committee Chair report. I have nothing to report at this time. Resource Committee, Mr. Stevens.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, school building needs?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Policy Committee, Mr. Horgan.
Yes, so we met last Thursday. We, our final agenda had five items. We went over policy 5117, the McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Assistance Act policy. Quite a mouthful. That policy got, or that act, rather, got updated in 2018. So there was some language that we needed to add to our policy to reflect that update. That got moved to a first reading. We'll have a second reading our next meeting, and then we'll bring it to a final approval to this committee soon. Student feedback survey, that will be tabled, that got tabled, we'll have that brought back up at our next meeting. Same thing with the school choice policy. We had a thorough discussion over the digital bill of rights and different policies that we have on the books regarding information, data, internet, mobile devices. Really just trying to make sure we have a thorough understanding and a very modern policy for that entire sphere of policy. So that will be a continuing discussion, and that will be continuing for our next meeting. And then finally, the public comment policy. I believe that that got recommended to our subcommittee from this general committee to reduce the public comment time from five minutes to two minutes, I believe. We went through a discussion, and I think that needs to be continued because I think it turned out that we didn't have, we weren't positive that we had the right policy in front of us. So that will be a continued conversation.
Was that, was that the, I thought, I believe it was supposed to be three minutes, was it? Five to three?
Five to three.
I thought it was supposed to be three.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, you know. Yeah, okay. Go ahead. Yeah, thank you.
Yep, and that was pretty much it. Thank you.
Any questions or comments or concerns? All right, seeing none, Student Support Subcommittee, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
There's nothing new to report.
Any questions or comments? Thank, thank you, Ms. LaBelle Pierce. No personal subcommittee, personnel subcommittee needed nothing to say there. Executive Committee, nothing as well. Do we have a student representative tonight?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor.
You do, okay.
If you're ready, we'll proceed to that.
Please.
Stand by, and here we go.
Aye. Not hearing her.
Yeah, I don't have volume.
Nathan.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's happening. We'll have to come back to that.
Okay. What should we, want to move on? I will my approval of the minutes from the previous school committee meeting of April 27, 2020.
Motion, we approve them?
Motion made to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, is unanimous, thank you. No, no need at this time for executive session. Any, anyone wishing to avail themselves of the communications section? No need at this time for executive session. Anyone wishing to avail themselves of the communications section? No need at this time for executive session. Anyone wishing to avail themselves of the communications section? We're having a technical difficulty here. Okay. Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Superintendent Jokla, do we have anyone?
We do not have any that I am aware of.
Thank you. Moving on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to start off with a recognition for our teachers. It is Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to thank our teaching staff for their agility, resilience, and dedication to our students during a historic period which none of us could have anticipated. I'm proud of our rapid transition to a remote learning model and engagement of our students. This transition has impacted all our lives, and I'm impressed with how our teachers have adapted our daily routines to help our students learn. Also, I just want to reemphasize to members of the community to complete the 2020 census. It's very important as it will help dictate how much federal funding Pittsburgh, North Central Mass, and Massachusetts will receive for the next decade. So again, please complete the census.
Okay, tonight we have a brief agenda. I first want to start off with Adam Renda, our Chief Intervention and Innovation Officer. We've begun interviewing, doing surveys of our staff. We plan to conduct additional interviews with our students and our parents to try to get feedback on how we can improve this remote learning model and increase student engagement. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Renda.
Just one minute. Okay, so as the superintendent mentioned, we are constantly trying to collect information to improve how we're doing this new normal. So one of the first things that we did was interview, survey parents. This was the, one of the first surveys that we're sending out to teachers to get some information on how to get students more engaged, but also to inform our student and parent survey, which will be released this week. So the purpose of this is to gain insights from our teachers so we can plan for tomorrow in the future education in Pittsburgh. We've had 297 teachers out of 460 respond. That's a 65%, 65% of them actually responded to this survey. That's, that's actually a tremendous amount of people responding to a survey. We look to gain some insight on improving communication. This is what the results said, what assignments students are completing and inform students in parent survey, which will be released hopefully this week. So this is a brief summary of the results of the teacher's survey. So just for purposes of this, one is not good results, and five is good results on the scale that we use. So we asked teachers to please rate their stress level during this time. And not too surprised, teachers are pretty stressed. But, you know, 31% or 92 teachers rating it a three, which is, you know, kind of a mid-range, almost a normal amount of stress. And, and we had 13.2% or 39 teachers saying they weren't very stressed at all. So not surprising at all. We had a follow-up question, asking teachers what they were doing to relieve stress and for some suggestions that we could share with other teachers. All of these responses were on, on this. I was expecting a huge variety of responses from this, but physical activity, getting outside, listening to music, meditation, yoga, were all on that list. Not surprising, and we're glad they're participating in that. We asked about how the, how clear the communication from the school to, to the teachers was. And to be honest, I was expecting to get zapped on this. I, I thought typically, whenever you ask an issue about communication, people want more of it. But really, the teachers were in, in every building satisfied with how the school principals of the school leadership is communicating with them. With really only eight respondents saying that it was not clear at all. The majority, and I mean, the the majority, well over 70% were at a four or five, saying it was very clear. We asked the same question, but we asked how they felt about the communication from the district. Again, I was expecting to get zapped on this, but again, pretty, pretty clear. You know, if you, if you factor in the three, we are well into 80, over 80% of the teachers thinking that the communication has been clear. However, there were comments about how, we asked what we could improve. And there were, like I said, a wide variety of responses, but really, I think what teachers are looking for is structure and routine in regards to communication. They're looking for getting the, the information kind of like the same time every week and in the same format. So we, we have been, and superintendent's done a great job of getting a lot of information out there. I think we need to sit down and plan how we can get this out kind of the same way in the same time every week as best we can. We asked our teachers what their biggest concern for their students was. There were a variety of responses, but overwhelmingly, teachers are worried about the social, emotional well-being, engagement in work, the students' mental health, their resources at home, and the gap that this is going to create. In our next steps, we will distribute the survey to parents and students in hopes of increasing engagement. We're going to streamline communication and technical skills. We are beginning now to be proactive in our approach to what the new normal is. So we need to shape what education is going to look like in Pittsburgh before it is done for us. And as Bob likes to say, we just need to get better every day. Questions?
Adam, I have a question. I've had this very briefly with Mr. Thompson and the superintendent. How, how? I mean, if, if the stress, if the stress level is in any degree with teachers, what, what are they basing that on? The fact that they, that they're remotely teaching?
I think that's part of it, Mayor. I think that the hardest thing for our teachers, and this is something I've struggled with too. We are so involved in the day-to-day well-being of our students that we lost that control. We lost the control of being able to pop into a classroom and check in on them. We lost the ability to call a parent in for a meeting. We just, we just don't know. And, you know, a lot of our families rely on the schools to, to a fairly serious degree. And we're, we're used to being there for them. We're used to, to providing whatever the need is as best we can. And, and with these circumstances, that's, that's hard to do. Our teachers care about our students a tremendous amount, and what they do on a daily basis for their social, emotional well-being is tremendous, and I think it's just, they feel powerless when it comes to that.
It's a frustration level.
It is, and you know, we're doing the best we can. We have clinical interventionists and school counselors reaching out and, and trying to provide the services to families as best we can. But that face-to-face connection is so important, especially for our homeless students.
I'm, I'm trying to remember the memorandum of understanding, like, so are teachers reporting to guidance or principals every week about who's completed their work, right? So I, I can tell you just on my end, the level of stress is high just because, you know, you might have staggered work, right, when you, when you taught in the classroom? And instead, you know, you're looking at like 100 and something number of assignments that are coming in each week to kind of keep track of who's doing the work and who's not. So, I mean, I know that you're, maybe you could explain that again, like how kids are getting credit for the fourth quarter? Or how different schools have established the protocol to like report on assignments?
Yes, I'll, I'll start answering that, and then I'm going to defer to John for the, for the grading. But yes, everyone's keeping track of students that are engaged and who are not, and not engaged. The guidelines recently changed when the state released the new guidelines with the new power standards. But we are trying to keep track, and we are trying to engage students who, who aren't. So we, so what we're doing is when students aren't engaged, is those names are being forwarded to school administration. And then school administration, school counselors, and sometimes school clerks are reaching out, trying to get connections with the families and either set up a virtual, a virtual meeting or getting some type of confirmation that the student is going to engage when. And for the most part, we're having some luck with that, and then there are some families who we simply can't engage with at all. And, and so part of that could be, they, they, during this, they may have moved. They may have moved in with family somewhere else, and they're just, they're not answering, there's, there's no cell number, they're not answering the home phone. But we have utilized the school resource officer to do some wellness checks for some of those cases where we haven't been able to get in touch with. In most cases, we have at least been able to get a phone call with almost 100% of our students. But that's a difference, there's a difference between talking to them on the phone and getting them to, to participate in school, right? And, and, you know, like everyone else, we are struggling with that with, with some students. We are not at 100%. John, could you answer that about grading? Thank you.
Yeah, so for, we're looking at using credit, no, no credit gene for grading purposes for the middle and high school. Some of the things we're using to judge is whether kids are completing assignments or not, whether or not they are engaging in the communication with the teacher or communicating, you know, on assignments with partners. It, it's very, it's very broad. So if you look at what we're doing, is we're truly giving kids the benefit of their situation at this time. We're looking, like I said, at assignments, number of times they're able to communicate with the teacher, and the engagement level during this time. So we're really truly basing it on whether kids are highly engaged or just engaging minimum to get credit. And then kids who pretty much disappeared, meaning no communication at all with teachers during this time, would be getting no credit, which we're hoping that's few and none. Jeremy, if you want to add on to anything that I just said, we're hoping that, you know, the majority of kids will get some credit during this time. But we're not looking at, you know, grading the assignments. We're giving them feedback, but not giving them traditional letter grades. That being said, and Mr. Jokla, if I'm speaking out of turn, please correct me. Today, we got some information that the state will be putting some more guidance out on grading. That's news to me. I thought that it was going to be local decision. And we could use credit or no credit, but it looks like they'll be giving a little bit more guidance in the next week. So possibly looking at that and maybe tweaking our system based on the new guidance that the state puts out.
Yeah, to clarify, the, the decision on grading is a local decision, and we have been following the, the previous guidance and, you know, we're comparing ourselves to what other districts are doing. And our practices are aligned with, you know, the practices of many, you know, districts, how they're grading students at different grade levels. Yet today, the commissioner threw out some new information in a speech to superintendents across the state. There will be additional guidance in a number of areas coming out over the next couple of weeks. One about competency determination for graduating seniors. Another one on, again, graduation is another local decision. And even today, the commissioner talked about potentially having more information available on May 18th for districts to make any plans for May or June. So I think, I think the bottom line in, in some of these areas, it's a very fluid dynamic in terms of what has been coming from the state and what continues to come down from the state. And the commissioner, in instances like grading and graduation dates, these are local decisions ultimately. Are there any other questions of Adam's survey? This is, this is probably, you know, one of the, from a staff survey perspective, I think the, the highest engagement we've ever had. And this is the first of a few surveys that we plan to complete to get additional feedback. This remote learning, as I mentioned, when I was talking about teacher appreciation, was really thrust upon everybody, teachers, students, families, with little to, almost no advanced warning. So, you know, the teachers in Pittsburgh and across the state and across the country are learning, adapting, and they're trying to do it better every day. And we just want to use these surveys as a, as a mechanism to try to help us improve our professional practice.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry, Adam. Were you, I mean, not that it was presented to us, nor does it need to be presented to us, but were you able in that survey to figure out like grade level of teachers and which schools they were responding from?
Yeah, so we, yes, we, we certainly could tell which, which school they're from. And we did arrange for grades because we really wanted people to feel safe. So we did pre-K to one, four, five to eight, and then, then nine to 12.
So you might have some actionable data there to like address concerns of particular grades?
Yeah, we certainly do. We can tell from which grade level, which school, which assignments are getting done. Yeah, it's, if you, there's, there's plenty of data to sift through to, to figure things out, yeah.
Okay, if there's no further questions, let's move on to Pittsburgh High School and graduation update. I'm going to try to have Alexis Curry of Goodrich join us momentarily. So Jeremy, if you can get started, and then if you want to just continue with the update on the innovation pathways grant as well.
Absolutely. So I know, I think that the student report is ready to go now, and I'm always glad to have the students go in front of me. So Nate, you want to take it away with Kayden, take two?
Hello again, this is Kayden, one of the student reps for the school committee. Online work remains focused on the Massachusetts learning standards and is still required for all this week. I received all my assignments for the week this morning, and the workload is a lot heavier this time around, given that APA exams are next week. FHS has its first vocational technical program that is officially improved until 2025. Students who have interest in this advanced manufacturing program should review the courses in the 2020-2021 program of studies. FHS is also excited to introduce a new educator early college dual enrollment pathway to go along with the healthcare and liberal arts pathways. As an early college dual enrollment pathway provides our students with 12 college credits at minimum before graduating high school. These courses are completely free, which equals at least four college classes, which at MWCC would cost $3,000, and Pittsburgh State $4,800. A senior car parade took place with a graduating class to see FHS staff on May 2nd at 5:00 PM, while maintaining social distancing, of course. Thank you to Mr. Walker and Ms. Kelly for coordinating, and to so many who helped make, make the senior car parade a success. You can check social media sites for pictures and videos as both FATV and Mr. Link did a tremendous job of capturing this event. The first full week of May is traditionally Teacher Appreciation Week across the United States. During this week, students, parents, administrators, and others can take an opportunity to recognize those amazing teachers who work so hard to have a positive impact, impact on the life of all students. Never before has the power and influence of teachers been so obvious than right now. A high school teacher often has over 100 students assigned to them, and still, our faculty at FHS makes unbelievable efforts to get to know every student and support their needs. I want to say thank you to all of our great teachers, and I include our administrators like Mr. DiGiaronimo, Ms. Jarrett, Ms. Scott, Mr. Intassi, and Mr. Soto, as well as our guidance counselors, nurses, and any educator or faculty member in the Pittsburgh Public School System for their dedication, hard work, unwavering care for their students, and the spirit that they bring to all of our schools. I think passing along a thank you to our teachers and educators in whatever way we can will go a long way, especially at a time like now. And finally, a huge thank you to all of you guys for continually finding ways to discuss and improve Pittsburgh Public Schools despite the craziness that is going on right now. I hope everyone and their families are safe and healthy, and I hope to meet again soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayden.
See, that's why I like to have her go first. But I will jump in now. And begin with update on graduation. So, yeah, before I even do that, I, you know, I would also say thank you to the teachers for work they do. And it's, it's impressive and amazing on so many levels, and I just want to say thank you to everybody. And not just in Pittsburgh, but certainly Pittsburgh Public Schools. So with respect to the graduation survey, we, we, we sent out a survey to the class of 2020 members and their parents last week to collect some information about a couple of different options that we could potentially do for graduation, given, you know, the circumstances that we're all living with, within. We had excellent response rate with over 80% of our students responding to the survey and nearly 50% of parents. So, so we're excited by that. You can see the breakdown of student-to-parent ratio on the survey results. What was real super clear is that both parents and students wanted to, to, want to delay the graduation commencement from May 29th to, to a later date. I think with the hopes that would be able to do a more traditional graduation ceremony. So, so we will do that. I, I sent an email update probably about an hour or two ago to class of 2020 members and their parents with, with that information, that the results are in, and it's super clear that you want to delay. And we will honor that because it's, you know, as I say to students all the time, it's not my education, it's yours. And in this case, it's not my graduation, it's yours. So for the class of 2020, you know, which has lived through, if I hear the word unprecedented one more time, and I'm going to use it in this case, unprecedented times, you know, then we're going to try to make it the best that we possibly can. So, so you can kind of see some of the breakdown of the voting. And interestingly, I think just with the number of votes that we, we did receive, both parents and students at 60%, just about for parents, and closing in on 65% of students, you know, voted for delay graduation, and we had very little support for the virtual graduation, which would be doing graduation completely, you know, digitally through video and that type of thing. And there are some schools, I think, that are looking at that, but what some others are doing is sort of a modified live virtual, and, and that receives some, some, some support, but certainly not as much as, as pushing it out. So next steps for us, you know, clearly, we do have to keep an eye on, on the state and what the, what the recommendations are in, in specific regulations. I know Superintendent Jokla mentioned Commissioner Riley's updates too. That, that was as recent as, as I think this morning. You know, it is a ongoing, changing kind of situation. So we'll take, take close watch on that, certainly, and whatever recommendations come from that reopening advisory board. We are planning to meet with class officers, the advisors. We met today, the advisors, myself and Mr. D. But we'll meet with the class officers on Wednesday and review a couple of different options in terms of dates, and also, you know, what we would like to try to do. Again, the goal would be, I think with delay, is to do as close to a traditional ceremony as possible. So we probably will choose two dates, because if we pick one that looks like we won't be able to do a traditional one, then we'd have a backup date. So we'll plan to get those out to, to our community ASAP, because we know that people have plans that they need to coordinate around. And again, we'll just be providing updates to the community ongoing. You know, with respect to the communication part that Mr. Renda talked about, certainly. You know, we would try to, to do a good job with that, but, you know, don't always, I think, and, and certainly want to do as well as possible. So we'll communicate frequently and, and, and try to So we'll communicate frequently and 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 try to consider the structures around that as well as that's good feedback too. But we definitely want to capture the spirit of the class and have the best possible graduation commencement that we can. I also want to do a quick just thank you. So we do have our signs in that we will be distributing to all members of the class of 2020. We have 240 members of the class of 2020. And, you know, this, I think you've seen maybe this in other communities. In our community, these have been completely paid for by members of the community. And I don't know, I know for a fact that's not the case in all. So I just want to thank Representative Stephen Hay and his family. I know he he was instrumental in a lot of this. And and there's a list of the donors that that helped make this particular sign a possibility. And we plan to start distributing these as soon as tomorrow. And I can think you I think you can see one is already launched right into a yard already. So I just want to thank those those folks on the on the slide for their generosity and their red rate of spirit. And it really is appreciated, and we're excited to get these out to our kids so you can start to see these around the city of Pittsburgh. So that's that's the quick update on graduation. And we'll come back to it with questions, certainly. I do want to update on innovation career pathways. Kayden did mention that and so did Superintendent Jokola. But we did receive official designation for an innovation career pathway, which will be valid for five years, along with 18 other schools. We, you know, we went through about a two-year process of applying for an advanced manufacturing pathway at Pittsburgh High. It'd be a six-credit pathway with 100-hour internship. I talked a little bit about that a couple of weeks ago. But we're, you know, just thrilled that the the governor's administration recognized the validity of our program and how important that will be to the North Central Mass area, specifically Pittsburgh. And and, you know, we'll go out to have already four manufacturing partners right here in in the city. So again, I think just to to capture it, there are only 42 high schools in Mass that have have one. Some have multiple, like the Worcester Public Schools, being a larger district with with a number of high schools have have a few more. But we we're excited to start ours, you know, and it really is our first vocational technical type of program that Pittsburgh High is going to be be able to offer. And, you know, it's 4,000 students is not a lot of students when you consider this about 75,000 per every single grade level in in the Massachusetts public schools. But we're going to be excited to to be doing it with 100 of ours. And that's the the target for our program. And, you know, we're really looking forward to launching this. So I'll just show quickly again for everybody out there who's observing this and watching this. And and, you know, our information is all posted to the Pittsburgh High School and Pittsburgh Public Schools websites, specifically on the Pittsburgh High website main page. The application is right there. We are accepting applications. It's a very simple process. It's very inclusive and open. So, you know, again, take advantage of this because we really feel this is going to give many of our students a huge leg up on on their development and in preparation for that next step in career or college. So glad to take questions now, and then we'll stop sharing, come back to the meeting.
I have a question, Jeremy. So for the online registration for next year's classes, are you, for a pathway program, would it mostly be juniors who would have the option to start taking those? Because I and I ask that because like a certain amount of recommend recommended courses are pushed out to kids. Sure. And like I just noticed for like the sophomore menu, there's no talk about that. I don't know unless they're aiming at a different audience or something, but I was just curious. How do kids know?
Well, yeah, so it's it's definitely gene A. So so the manufacturing program specifically would be sophomore, junior, senior, with freshman, second semester freshman getting a lot of information about it. Of course, this year's been difficult because we were just ready to start to have class meetings about this and do quite a bit of advertising and discussing it and so forth. So we've had to resort to communication virtually and through email and so forth. However, you know, with specifically with respect to the manufacturing, would have, we look to 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 do 25 or even potentially more students per grade level. And again, picking up second semester freshmen, you know, with a lot of support from guidance and and teachers and that type of thing. So if you're saying it's not available, I'll I'll go and check on that, you know, in terms of our X2, you know, course registration.
Well, I don't know if it's available. I'm just saying I think kids got an email of what their recommended courses should be, right? So is that?
Yes.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I so I'm sure it probably is something that's available. I'm just like if you're taking your cue from whatever your guidance counselor sends. Like, I guess my big question is, is there, like, are you targeting certain kids to say, we want you to look at this innovation pathway? Or or is that kind of an open thing? Like, I I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's so so great question. It is totally open to any student. There would be a combination, you know, the the communication that we have you that we've done so far and will continue is is to everybody. To to your point, they'll be, they would be targeted communications with guidance counselors, for example, with particular students who've shown an interest, say, you know, they're taking tech ed courses, or maybe they're interested in the STEM. Like, we were going to do quite a bit with our STEM pathway freshman team, you know, with recruiting in there. But any any student is, it's open to any student because because even with like the early college programs of dual enrollments, and we're excited about the educator pathway, one that's starting up this year. The the innovation career pathway will include not only the sort of industry credentials that would be, you know, something that a person could use in an interview for a manufacturing job, but also dual enrollment credit. So so we, you know, we envision this as really, you know, across the board, running the gamut of the entire student population for interest. And and it would be, you know, open to anyone. So I would definitely, you know, we'll we'll coordinate a little bit on that communication. Like I said, the the challenge has just been, we had had a structure in place from sort of mid-March to about mid-May to communicate this a lot in person, you know. And 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 we're just adjusting on the fly like everybody. And it just, it's unfortunate, it's our year year one of implementation with with this. But we'll we'll make it work and it'll it'll be great regardless. It'll just be maybe a little bit different than exactly what we had planned.
Yeah, it must be tough for the incoming ninth grade, just in organizing that communication to them, right? So has that been successful so far? Have they registered?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting. We had a a meeting today about start getting a transition Google Hangout or Zoom meeting scheduled for the class of 2024. Because, you know, we want to, we want, you know, I guess, connect with the current eighth grade in ways that just we haven't been able to, which would be visits down to the middle schools. And Jen Scott has done quite a bit of that in the fall. But the spring is when you really come back at it pretty hard, you know. So we we'll be doing, and we, I think next week, we'll be doing an evening event, you know, much like this for any eighth grade parent and student. There'll be an overview of of the programs at the school, things like the advanced manufacturing program too, for sure, in addition to other things. And then Q and A, just I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions about what does it look like? You know, that type of thing, you know, in terms of fall in the high school and so forth. And we'll try to answer those to the best of our ability, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Jeremy, I guess I just want to emphasize one of the things that you mentioned, that it's open to anyone.
Yes.
We're all about here in Pittsburgh, and at Pittsburgh High School is providing access, opportunity, and equity. So again, here's another offering that we that we provide our students. So whether they want to pursue a career pathway or a college pathway, and they have some career skills, that option is available to them. And this is just another feather in our hat for all the offerings that we do off of Pittsburgh High School. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hey, we're going to try to have Alexis Curry, Principal of Goodrich, join us, but she's unable to join us, so I think we'll just.
She's on.
No, I'm on.
Oh, you're on.
I ran on when you sent me the text. I'm like, what? He can't see me? I'm pressing the cat. That's okay. It's not a problem, Bob. Usually I'm I'm a little obvious from far away, but okay.
Well, you are obvious, Alexis.
Thanks.
Alexis, if you can just go ahead with an update on the Goodrich graduation.
Sure, sure. Okay, so firstly, I I just, as I said, came in from a spread meeting. So if I missed anything or anyone needs anything from me when I'm done, please feel free to ask. But what we've been talking about at Goodrich is we have just begun to conduct Google Hangouts with all seniors. We're going in small groups of 10 and having half-hour meetings with them just to address social or emotional learning needs that we've been addressing already on an ongoing basis. But to specifically speak to questions of graduation, I did not, as I said, hear all of Jeremy's, but I'm sure he probably shared with you similar kind of responses from our student, which is that they desperately want a graduation ceremony. I think for them, of particular importance is crossing the stage. So what we're talking about is not making any promises about exactly when that will be or exactly what it will look like. But we're basically just in the process of reassuring our students that we understand exactly how critically valuable the actual process is for them in the ceremony. So that we do respect that, and we are doing our everything in our power not to eliminate that. So that's what we're talking about. Most of them are just having a lot of questions about exactly that. When will it look like? What will it look like? Where will it be? And when will it be? And regrettably, we cannot answer those questions for them. I shared an email with in every classroom. I have access to all classrooms and share media announcements in there quite frequently. And I shared with them that it was only last week that the governor or a little before that, that the governor actually said they would not be devising a plan for graduations, but rather individual superintendents would be doing so. And I let him know that that was announced at the principal's meeting and that Superintendent Jokola is working with Jeremy and I to find out exactly what we, you know, would like that to look like, what it's reasonable for that to look like, and how it will happen.
Any questions of Principal Curry?
Any questions for any any part of it?
Okay, thank you, Alexis.
Wait, she's asking me a question, Bob, spell, but she's muted.
I just double clicked on it, sorry. So Alexis, how's the engagement level at Goodrich in?
Well, we're, I I mean, this is the certainly not ideal for our students, maybe even more so than others. But we're pouring out the outreach. We have, I established advisories so that each teacher, actually each staff member in the building has only 15 students that they have to monitor. We're calling everyone once weekly. We've delivered posters to every house. We've made videos for all of the kids. We monitor their engagement. We run raffles every week to get them involved. And we're just staying on top of them and staying as close as we possibly can. Right now, we are very pleased. We are, we're at 92% engagement. And I want to say that that does not mean they're all caught up in every assignment. However, it's been a grueling challenge, and we're very proud of the fact that we now have 92%. We're and on, and now we've devised what's called power trackers that are actually going to go to the homes of and the workplaces of the 14 students or so that it is that we cannot get on. We have someone from a church going to one of their houses today. So our goal, like everyone's, is 100% engagement. But the kids are really responding to us. They're just very sad. Our kids thrive with the connection and and being in the building together. But we're doing every bit of that that we can, you know, do without them being there. I had countless texts and emails of kids saying they cried out loud. And one of them said, for half hour, because we deliver these poster boards of encouragement to each house and we go by and just visit. So we're doing everything we can to stay engaged. It's far less than ideal. And we're, just like everyone else, we're not perfect at it. We're still learning. But teachers are, we started, when we closed the school the day of, we started engaging right away. And right now, what we're doing is we're kind of going full-fledged on video conferencing because we feel like now we've got them engaged. We've got 92% to sign on. How do we keep them on? So every teacher is doing multiple Google Hangouts every day. And we're just trying to keep every kid that we can seeing our faces and us seeing theirs and hearing our voices and us hearing theirs.
Yeah, that's great.
We're trying. Any any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis.
Thank you all.
Okay, so Craig, you want to bring us home with the summary of the grants? And I've emailed out the correct grant spreadsheet for this evening. I think what had been sent to you in your package was from the April 6 meeting. So you should have the correct grant spreadsheet forwarded to you now.
Yep, thanks, Bob. So we have one donation to be accepted this week. It is from the United Way for 560 meals with an estimated value of $3,000. And that's to be used district-wide to combat hunger. We have three grants to be submitted. One is FY21 Capital Skills Grant, that's $149,000. And that is at Pittsburgh High School, and that's for implementing costs associated with the Advanced Manufacturing Pathways Initiative. The second one is Mass FY21 Massachusetts 24th Century Community Learning High Quality Project-Based Learning Curriculum Development Grant. That's a $50,000 grant. It is to support high-quality project-based learning. And we have two schools that have applied $25,000 each for Crocker and for South Street. And the last grant to be submitted is the FY21 McKinney Vento Homeless Education Grant. That's $20,000. And that's to provide support to our homeless students. And then lastly, good news, one grant to be accepted. We were awarded under the School Water Improvement Grant 19 fast-fill hydration stations to be used throughout the district. That's 19 units at an estimated value of $57,000. And that was through the Mass Clean Water Trust. So that was exciting news. That was something that we've been working on this year and a and a goal for us for next year to get the hydration stations installed at each one of the schools.
What, can you, we went through a little more, what is a hydration station? Is that a bubbler?
So it's it's the modern bubbler. So it basically is a, it's a filtered fast-fill bottle filling station that provides extra filtering for lead and contaminants in in the water. And, you know, we encourage students to bring their own water bottles. And and going into next year, we'd have much more important to have students drinking from their own water bottles and not visiting the the communal water fountain.
Right, great. Okay.
And lastly, we have a warrant to be accepted, WG20031, for $1.85 million.
What is the pleasure of the of the committee, bundle 20-1290 up through and including 201293?
Think a motion, we accept.
Motion to accept action items 20-2012 and not 90 up through and including 20-1293. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, that is unanimous.
I'm sorry, where's the second on that vote?
I'm sorry.
Where's the second?
I think it was Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I don't believe there's a need for an executive session. I hear a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I could just make one comment first. It kind of goes, kind of goes along with graduation. The Association will be meeting Wednesday night. And we are going to be voting for the awards this year. And our awards will be consistent with what we have been coming for the last several years. So we've had a good response from the high school seniors. So those kids, you know, so great. At High School, alumni association is still working on that.
Yeah, Alumni Association does a great job every year. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. You know what? Believe it or not, I, I, I don't know about you guys, but I miss you all, you know? Is that kind of weird or what? I mean, is that, no? Okay. I can see Mr. Garner is practicing distancing from his razor.
You got that right, Mayor. It's.
I, I miss you more than anyone. Even you got that. You have General Longstreet look from the Civil War. You're looking.
I miss all you guys too.
From motion to adjourn.
On that note.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thanks, everybody.